Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, Chair Daniel Kater.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to call to order the April 18th, 2019 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Kater.
Here.
Commissioner Bowers.
Here.
Commissioner Bell.
Here.
Commissioner Wade.
Here.
Commissioner Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Lomas.
Here.
Commissioner Rudnick.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to everyone attending tonight's Planning Commission Meeting. This Commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and much more. When applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes the request. Planning staff will present the facts about the project along with their recommendation to the Planning Commission, who will approve the item or make a recommendation as appropriate. Our goal is to carefully consider each project and make a decision that will balance individual rights with public welfare and the general well-being of our community. Before we get started with our agenda tonight, I would just like to acknowledge the newest member of the Planning Commission. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to Planning Commissioner Michael Bowers. Welcome to the class. We look forward to working with you. Thank you. Yes. And then now we will move on to public statements. This is a time reserved for anyone wishing to address the Commission on any matter not on the public agenda, public hearing portion of the agenda. If you are here on items 5A through 5D, this is not the time to speak. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the Commission? If so, please come forward and state your name. Seeing no one wishing to give a public statement, we will now move on to the consent calendar non-public hearing items. These items are typically housekeeping or administrative matters that do not require a public hearing. Does any Commissioner wish to remove a consent calendar, non-public hearing item for separate Seeing no one, may I have a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the consent calendar non-public hearing items?
Motion to adopt.
Commissioner Wade, may I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Lomas, thank you. Madam Secretary, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kater.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
We will now move on to the consent calendar public hearing items. The next agenda section includes public hearing items that are considered routine or non-controversial. These items have been reviewed by staff and are conditioned in accordance with the requirements of the municipal code. The Planning Director will read each of the items on the consent calendar to ensure that the public has an understanding of all items to be considered. If you would like to speak on an item, please come forward after the items are read and ask that the item be removed for discussion. If no items are removed by a member of the public or a Commissioner, the Commission will vote on all items together in one motion without further comment. Mr. Coyle, will you please read the items, items 5A through 5E on tonight's consent calendar public hearing?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission. We have four projects on the agenda this evening. Project 5A is a request for an extension of time for vesting tentative parcel map 11698, which consists of four lots on 40 acres for the purposes of multifamily residential and commercial development located on the north side of Palladino Drive, a mile east of Morning Drive. Notice of sequo exemption on file. Staff recommends approval. Project 5B is an extension of time for vesting tentative tract map 6410, which consists of 140 single-family residential lots on 65.64 acres located on the north side of Taft Highway, east and west of Acres Road. We have a notice of exemption on file and staff recommends approval. Project 5C is an extension of time for vesting tentative tract map 6866, which consists of 310 single-family residential lots located approximately one mile south of the intersection of Highway 178 and Miramonte Drive. We have a notice of exemption on file and staff recommends approval of this project. And finally, Project 5D, Plan Development Review Number 19-0038. Adventist Health is requesting a plan development review for a hospital and medical offices in the C2 PCD District located at 1614 Coffee Road. We have a notice of exemption on file. Staff is requesting that the Commission refer this back to staff for some additional analysis of the project. This concludes my reading of tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. At this time, I will open all of the consent calendar public hearing items. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on a consent calendar public hearing item? Again, this is not the time to take testimony. Only request that the item be removed from this portion of the agenda and moved to the public hearing portion of the agenda. Oh, please come to the front, state your name and ask which item, or say which item you'd like to move to the public here. Oh, it's okay.
I have comments on item C.
5C?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, yes.
Does it sit down?
Yeah, you're welcome to sit in the front too. Yeah. Is there any other member of the audience wishing to move a consent calendar public hearing item to the public hearing portion of the agenda? Are there any Commissioners wishing to move an item from the consent calendar? All right. Seeing no additional audience members or Commissioners, I will now, at this time, the public hearing of all consent calendars, items 5A, 5B, and 5D are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation to approve item 5A and B and approve staff's recommendation to refer item 5D back to staff for additional review?
I'll make a motion to approve, approve the staff recommendations for items 5A, 5B, and return item 5D to staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. May I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Lomas. This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Kater.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
It is now time to hear the consent calendar public hearing item 5C removed from that portion of the agenda. Before we begin, I'd like to explain how each, how the hearing will be conducted. Staff will first give a report, then those in favor of the project will be allowed to speak. Those in opposition to the project will be able to speak after those in favor have spoken. Each side will then be given a five-minute, five minutes to provide rebuttal comments. Again, this is five minutes total time for all speakers. Individual speakers may ask questions during their statements, but the questions will not be answered until the public hearing on that item is closed. If you'd prefer, written comments may also be given to the Clerk, who will provide copies to the Commission. Please be respectful for others participating in the hearing by not repeating the remarks of previous speakers and presenting any new comments or thoughts in a concise and clear Mr. Coyle, would you please provide us your staff report on item 5C?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just very briefly again, Porter and Associates is requesting an extension of time for vesting tentative tract map 6866, consisting of 310 single-family residential lots located one-half mile south of the intersection of Highway 178 and Miramonte Drive. We have a notice of exemption on file and staff recommends approval of this project. This concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. The public hearing on this item is open. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
My name is Fred Porter, and I'm Porter and Associates Engineering, and I represent the owner, Mr. Erdman. I'm here just to answer any questions you might have, anybody has, on the project. Again, this is a map that was approved many years ago, and it, Mr. Erdman has owned this property for a long, long time, and they desired to do a tentative map on it, and we did that. I don't remember the year, but anyway, I'm here to answer questions. This is typically a routine extension of time request, so if you have questions for me, please feel free to ask me. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed.
My name is Carolyn Ronald, and I'm a resident of Solera neighborhood, which is directly behind the proposed development. I have a couple of concerns. One is two-story homes being built right behind some of the lots in Solera. I also, I'm concerned about the size of the houses, the value of the houses, and will it be similar to those in the area? Sorry. I also question why, after 12 years, there's not another environmental impact report required? I know the staff has approved it, but after 12 years, there would be a great deal of change in plant life, wildlife, water, perhaps oil drilling in the area, and I think that should be looked at again for the safety of everyone in the area. That's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the project? If so, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing no additional speakers in opposition, does any Commissioner have questions for the public on this item? Remember, this is not the time to express any opinions on the matter, only time to ask questions. These are also questions for staff. Is there any? Seeing no Commissioner comments at this time, I will now open it up for a period of rebuttal. Again, this is a five-minute period of total time for all speakers in favor and opposition, providing an opportunity for the public to respond, for one side to respond to the other. Since we heard from those in favor first, those in opposition second, I think we'll open up the rebuttal period for those in favor of the project. And Madam Clerk, if you would put five minutes on the clock, we're already there. Anyone wishing to speak, provide rebuttal comments to, in favor of the project, now is your time to speak. Remember, this is five minutes total for all speakers, so please be succinct and respectful of others. Thank you. Actually, are there any speakers that wish to provide comments in the rebuttal period? All right. Seeing no speakers wishing to rebut, I will close the rebuttal period and give an opportunity for, do we provide rebuttal around if no one rebuts? Okay. All right. Seeing no additional speakers, we will close the rebuttal period, and seeing no Commissioner questions, I will now close the public hearing on this item, refer to the Commission for comment and action. Commissioner Lomas.
In response to the speaker's questions, could staff explain the legalities and what is this Commission may or may not do at this point?
Yes, and I could even expand a little on her concerns, that this map has some conditions already in place that are relative to two-story homes on the north end of the project which would butt up to your neighborhood. So on Phase 1, lots 25 through 33, they cannot, they must build a single-story structure, and the same goes for lots 9 through 11 on Phase 2. So those are the ones that are on future Ant Hill Drive that butt up to your neighborhood. So that is a condition that will be carried forward with this extension of time. And then, in terms of approving the extension of time, we would have to make very specific findings as to the reasons we cannot extend this map.
Could you speak to the legalities of that, though? And what we actually are doing here and what, what position we can do, the limitations that we have?
So, my understanding is you'd have to find a change in the health, safety of the environment of the neighborhood from when you originally approved it to now, and I've heard really nothing in the record to show that that would be the case tonight.
And then, could staff also speak to the, the environmental concerns that are, and how that is mitigated?
Because the environmental that was done was sufficient for the use at the time, and this is merely a continuation of that project, so the environmental report is still valid. There's no reason that it wouldn't be valid.
And those are dictated to us by the state, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer your questions?
I just...
If you don't mind, Chair?
Oh, yeah, of course.
One on the two stories, yes, there are a few lots that are required to be one-story, but there are others in the same line and on the same street that can be two stories. And as to the EIR, my understanding is that the state law says that it's not required and it's up to the city to determine if a new impact report is needed. And I guess, from my standpoint, I don't understand, simply because it was approved and the conditions of the environment were approved at that point, 12 years later, it's changed. Why should it be grandfathered into a project after that much time?
And that speaks to the quality of our general plan, and I'm going to leave that to the experts to be able to explain that to you.
Well, the general plan, I'm talking the environmental impact report.
And that's tied to our general plan.
Okay.
So, the, it's, it's probably a bit complicated, so what I've asked staff is that, are we fully protected and are we mitigating everything properly? Staff has assured us that they have. So for understanding it a little better, could I offer staff to take you aside and explain the details of this a little bit in more clarity to you?
Yeah, and it won't take up time in the meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any other Commissioners wishing to speak? All right. Are you wishing to speak or wishing to make a motion? Okay. Okay. Seeing no other Commissioners wishing to speak, may I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation?
I'd like to make a motion to approve staff recommendation for an extension of time for vesting tentative tract map 6866.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. May I have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Wade. Madam Secretary, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kater.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda. Now moving on to new business, which we have one item, 7A tonight, the selection of Chair and Vice Chair for May, for the upcoming season of Planning Commission. Season, yeah, season 25, yeah. For the period of May 1st, 2019 through April 30th, 2020. You can. We're now on YouTube. Our public following is very large, yeah. So, are there any nominations? Commissioner Lomas?
Which one's up first?
You're the only one that...
No, no, for Chair or Vice Chair, which one are we doing first?
May I have a nomination for Vice Chair?
Vice Chair, can we do it the other way around?
Yeah, it was written this way, but I will...
I'll do it the other way.
No, I'll amend it.
Any way's fine.
Can I do it the other way around?
Yes, you can. Commissioner Lomas, you can do whatever you'd like.
Whatever you want to do.
Liar.
We're all here just to entertain you, so...
Okay, let me, let me start over. Are there any nominations for Chair for the upcoming season of Planning Commission?
I do, I have a nomination.
Commissioner Lomas.
We've had such a lovely year with Commissioner Kater serving as our Chair, I would like to nominate him to continue for another year.
Thank you, Commissioner Lomas.
You're welcome. You need a second?
I'll second that.
There you go.
In the honor of fairness, is there, are there any other nominations?
He did that to me, too.
Self-nominations are okay, it's all right, yeah. All right.
What you brought.
As I am running unopposed, I will accept the nomination, and I've enjoyed this past season, and I look forward to working with you all.
Do we vote?
Do we have to vote?
Yeah.
This is a roll call vote. Madam Secretary?
Commissioner Kater.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
Okay, so now it is time for nominations of Vice Chairman. Are there any nominations?
Yeah, and do it again.
All right, Commissioner Lomas.
All right, and since Commissioner Coleman has done such a good job, that, and, and he, and he has served so well in your absence, the...
I was gone like one time, come on.
Just one time. I said "absence," not absences.
Absences, okay, thank you, yeah.
Okay, so I would like to nominate Commissioner Coleman.
Okay. Any other nominations? Or was that a like, because you can't wait to second that nomination? All right, is there a second?
I second that.
Commissioner Wade. Madam Secretary, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kater.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowers.
Yes.
Commissioner Bell.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman.
Yes.
Commissioner Lomas.
Yes.
All right, well, I look forward to serving with you all this upcoming year. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, Workshops. We have a presentation tonight by Mr. Coyle about this exciting electronic voting system that we have in front of us.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair and Planning Commission, but...
Is that not true?
That is not true. You're actually going to receive some training from an expert.
But I did get a little concerned, it was like, mm, yeah.
We have, we have Aaron Kennedy and Julie Dramakis here to provide the training this evening, so I will turn it over to the experts. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for attending tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Julie Dramakis, City Clerk, along with Assistant Technology Services Director Aaron Kennedy. This evening, we're here to introduce our final phase of the NOVUS Agenda Meeting Management System. The previous phase, the first part of it was started in 2014. It was mainly directed towards internal processes and improving efficiencies for staff, as well as reducing the amount of paper that boards and commissions and City Council produce and consume, and to create a more transparent agenda and packet and materials for the public. This final phase is directly going to affect you guys. We are implementing the Minutes Module, which includes some various meeting management tools. The reason that we are implementing this is we have aging equipment in this room, and as they are no longer supported, we have to find a solution to replace it. So this evening, we're going to run through a brief workshop with you and introduce you to the voting module. We will do a practice vote. Aaron Kennedy will lead and assist, and I will go ahead and assist Dana in opening the vote. Do you have any comments to add, Aaron?
Commissioner Kater, Chairman, and Commissioners, what we're going to be doing is showing you how the vote works. What ends up happening is when you guys have, currently you do the roll call vote, going forward after this meeting, you guys will be able to use the electronic vote. When the Chair or Vice Chair in his absence calls for a vote, the Clerk, or the Secretaries, in this case Dana today and Julie will be assisting her to make sure that it's able to go through the steps. When they call that, on your tablets, on the main page that you guys are on, it will pop up that says yes, no, or abstain. Those will be your choices. When you select that choice, you will then be asked to confirm that choice. After you confirm that choice by tapping it again, it'll get recorded onto the computer that the Clerk uses. Once everyone has actually voted, Clerk will then say, give you the results of that and present it up onto the monitors behind you for the public, as well as the monitors on the dais for you to see. We're going to go ahead and do a quick vote really quickly, if you want to go help her to make sure that it gets there. So, for example, the Chair would say, you know, there's a motion before you, like he was doing earlier with the different announcements, go ahead and open a vote. But as a understanding, it does take about a second or two for it to pop up on your screen. So once you do it, please be patient. It is not just new technology, but technology designed to be able to be used outside of this room, so that if there was any reason that we had to conduct any of these meetings elsewhere, we'd be able to take the same exact equipment, move it there. One of the downsides of that is it does have a slight delay when it runs. So it should have popped up on your screens now, so please go ahead and cast your vote, go ahead and say, say yes or abstain, whichever one. It actually worked better in this demonstration if you guys select different ones so we can see it. And so now, again, once she closes a vote, Clerk would call it off, in this particular case, it failed, and nobody voted there, but...
It was a very recent...
Yeah. Yeah. But in this particular case, what you can see is, as part of the ability for it to be visually useful for somebody who has perhaps colorblindness, it will use an X, a red X for no's, a circle with a slash through it for abstain, and then Dana, if you can open up another vote, and this time, let's go ahead and actually accept that, you know, we wanted to go there, so we can...
Abstain, you got it up here as no.
You didn't.
I did abstain, and he has a no.
I thought you pressed no.
I pressed abstain.
We'll double-check that real quick.
Yeah, I hit confirm and everything, but you got, you had it as a red X.
Yes, we're going to vote again on theirs, and go ahead and at least have one person say yes to it, so we can see how that one would look.
Oh, you know what? I had to, I had to correct myself. I did vote against it, I apologize.
You did, I saw it.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't remember what I voted for. So I don't remember what I voted for.
Seriously, we were going to have to publicly shame you. You can vote against now.
I can vote against now? I'm going to vote against now. All right, here we go. All right, sorry. I was going to...
Okay, so now, as you can see, we're... Now, if you'll notice on Oscar, what we did this time was he, Commissioner Rudneck, we, as he is absent, we marked him absent in the system, so that actually shows us that yellow vertical slash, so that you will know for sure he was not here, he neither voted for, against, or abstained, he was absent, the green checks are those that vote for. As you can see, it does take about two seconds after you guys have voted for it to come to the clerk, and then when the clerk closes the votes and then presents it, it does take about another two seconds for it to run through the backend system. It actually has to go to the internet, it's hosted, it's a hosted system, so that we will be able to do this in any room. Downside is it does take about two seconds for it to post. Additionally, when we are actually doing this in an actual meeting, one of the requests that we'd have is, after you have voted, to please give us about three seconds, so that we can get this up on the broadcast, so they'll have that up there, about three seconds, and then move on to the next item. This gives us enough timing to be able to have it on there long enough for somebody to see the results. And I open it if there's any questions.
Should we talk about the request to speak?
Yeah, so she was reminding me also on the request to speak, the request to speak button, which we had enabled before, actually is now fully functional. We apologize for that small technical snafu where it wasn't showing up properly. The issue is the same with the request to speak. If you do want to request to speak and use the tablets and you push the, there should be a request to speak button on there, it will show up on the chair's tablet, problem is it does take about two seconds to show up. So, again, if you want to do any comments or request to speak, it is best if you push it there before the commissioner says, and seeing none, and if you decide to speak, you might want to call your attention to it, because it will take a moment or two before that shows up. Again, if there's any questions or concerns, comments, I'm here to help, and then, as always, we have technical support and broadcast support in the back room every meeting available for you guys.
So will the process remain, I'm sorry, I jumped around, will the process remain the same, so we'll vote electronically, and then the, and then the clerk will read what the vote is, or?
The way that the clerk will read it is, she will read, if it passes and everybody is the same, she'll just say the motion passed unanimously, or the motion passed. If anybody abstains or votes against, she would call out who, who voted against, unless the case of everybody voting no and only one yes, it would say the motion has failed with, in this particular case, Commissioners Kater, Wade, and Lomis saying, you know, yes, and Commissioners Bowers, Bell, and Coman voting no, in this particular case, it would be a tie, so I'm not sure how that works in a planning commission, but if it, I don't, again, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you guys, at that point, it goes in your normal process, but instead of calling the vote out individually, you do this one. It's a little better visually, and it's a little better electronically, keeps us, allows us to record the votes immediately. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation, it was very helpful.
Thank you.
We look forward to the new system.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item Nine, Communications.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to thank Aaron and Julie for providing this evening's training. I would also like to welcome Commissioner Bowers to the Planning Commission. We are now at full force, so that should be very exciting for the city. Congratulations to Commissioners Kater and Coman for retaining their leadership positions on the commission. And the final announcement is, the Planning Commission will meet again on Thursday, May second, at five-thirty here in the council chambers. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. We will move on to Item Ten, Commissioner Comments. All right, no Commissioner comments? Then I will, in a less robotic way, again, thank you, Michael Bowers, I was reading off of a script when I said it originally, but I would just like to officially and sincerely welcome you to the commission. And then seeing no other commissioners requesting to speak, I will adjourn the meeting at six oh six. Have a good evening.